Welcome to the regular meeting of council of the Corporation of the Municipality of Central Elgin on Tuesday, May 23 at 7:00 PM in the council chambers and via Zoom. If we could now stand for the National Anthem. The Municipality of Central Elgin acknowledges that it is located on the land of the Maquis Treaty that was signed by the Wahandad and Enishabi nations, including ancestors of Chipewas of the Thames First Nation. It is also the traditional territory of the Hadesani, Atawandurank, and Mississauga Nation. These first nations continue to provide ongoing stewardship of the land and waters in the municipality of Central Elgin. If I could ask if anyone has a disclosure of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none. Adoption of the minutes from previous meetings, regular council, and dangerous dog hearing. Questions or comments from council? Counselor Halpin, please.
Thank you through you, Mayor Sloan. Again, it does say in the minutes of the regular meeting that you declared interest, and I don't believe that was the case.
One more time, declared interest in, sorry, Counselor Halpin.
I apologize. I believe that it says in the minutes that you declared interest in bylaw for the budget.
I thought so. We signed the separate part for the budget as was directed. Was that not in there?
Yes, we did vote it separately, but I went back through it and I saw that there wasn't actually a declaration where you stated which section you would recuse from and for what purpose. The purpose being part of it that does have to be done by the municipal act. And then, I'm not sure, but maybe Delaney, maybe Ms. Leach could tell us whether you've filed the papers.
Sure. Ms. Leach?
I do not have any formal filing, but I, from my recollection, there was a verbal declaration.
Counselor Halpin, follow up?
Thank you through you, Mayor Sloan. I did look through it. What I have is a spot where Mr. Graves says that there's a section, which I believe you had declared conflict on. And there's a section where you say, I will do the same as far as recusing, but there's not actually any point where, as described in the municipal act, there's a section named that you intend to recuse from specifically like Schedule B or Schedule C. And there's also not a reason for recusing given, which is part of the requirement.
Thank you. I didn't know if I will do the same. Might have been understood. Mr. Graves, comment?
Well, I think in terms of what transpired that evening, you in fact didn't vote on that section. And I, we can certainly make note the counselors' comments this evening.
Thank you.
Counselor Watson?
Oh, through you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have this in front of me, but I remember, I thought you recused yourself from Section D of the fired budget, right? So I thought we had done it all perfectly fine at the time. Sorry for the misunderstanding.
Thank you, Counselor Watson. Counselor Halpin, please.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Sloan. Declaring a conflict of interest has a sort of, there's sort of four pieces to it. First, verbally, you have to state what specific section of the council agenda you intend to recuse yourself from. And then you need to state what the reason is that you have an interest against it. And then you have to file paper reiterating what the part was that you could not vote, and also again, what the reason was for that. So that's where I say, I do see that he recused himself. I see that the vote didn't occur. I just don't know that we can correctly say in the minutes that an interest was declared because we didn't really meet those criteria.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Noble, please.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think we followed the guidance of staff, which should keep us in the progression of safety and what's necessary.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Got a mover in a second or for the adoption of the minutes, please. Counselor Graham, Deputy Mayor Noble.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Graham, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that the minutes of the regular meeting of council and the dangerous dog hearing dated May 8, 2023 be adopted.
Call those in favor. Closed and carried. Delegations, we have a presentation this evening from Dillon Consulting, zoning bylaw amendment and urban design guidelines project. Thank you.
Mr. Graham, please. Yeah, Mr. Mayor. So we have Ron Chishido from Dillon Consulting, and Ron is one of the principals at Dillon and a longstanding relationship with the Municipality of Central Elgin on planning matters, as well as, sorry, Nicole Mueckelit. And I believe Nicole will do a presentation tonight with respect to the public consultation component of the comprehensive zoning update that the municipality is currently underway with.
Thank you, Mr. Graham.
Sorry, Ron, we can't hear you. No. Nicole, are you able to speak?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Ron, maybe put your speaker down. I see it's up. I don't know if you're plugged in as well.
Oh, I do this all the time. There we go. Okay.
Don't I know you, Ron.
Your microphone was an antenna for a second.
Oh, yeah. My apologies, Mayor Sloan and council. So with that, I'll proceed.
Thank you.
So as Lloyd indicated, my name's Ron Chishido. I'm with Dillon, and I'm the project manager for this, for this project. And with me is Nicole Buickley, and she is the engagement lead for the project. We will be making the presentation together, and Nicole will be changing the slides from her laptop. Next slide, Nicole, please. Okay. So I'm going to give you an overview of the project team, purpose of the project, the, the planning context and frame of reference for the project, as well as key work plan steps, the project schedule, and key milestones. Nicole will give you an overview of the stakeholder engagement plan. Then I'll touch on our current activities to close the presentation. They should take about 20 minutes, and then I'll pass it back to the mayor and council for questions. Next, next slide, please, Nicole. So the project team, so Dillon is a prime consultant for the project, or consultant team represents a blend of project experience in applying current best practices, use of innovative tools, and local knowledge. Our technical leads are Justin, Justine Giancola for the zoning bylaw team, and Martina Bronstein for the urban design guidelines team. Now, this project is a hands-on collaboration with staff from Central Elgin and the Central Elgin Planning Office. Next slide, please. The Central Elgin team is led by Lloyd Perrin and Jeff Brooks. Next slide, please. And the Central Elgin Planning Office team includes Kevin McClure, who's the Central Elgin planner, as well as Jim McCombe, Steve Craig, Mike Noon, and Alistair McLean. The number of staff from Central Elgin Planning Office clearly demonstrates the importance of the project to both Central Elgin and CPO. Now, this collaboration of skills, knowledge, and experience will ensure the zoning bylaw and urban design guidelines meets the needs of Central Elgin and is delivered on time and on budget. Next slide, please. So the project purpose, to create a new zoning bylaw, as well as companion urban design guidelines to implement the new 2022 Central Elgin official plan. The, the new zoning bylaws going to provide a contemporary and flexible approach for regulating development, be clear and concise. And when we say clear and concise, what we mean is it needs to be easy to read and to understand. This is not a document for planners, but really a document for the public. And if the public can understand it, then it's achieving its purpose. And the last thing to provide an appropriate balance between regulation and flexibility. Next slide, please. So the companion urban design guidelines, they're going to be applied municipality-wide. They're going to be consistent with the urban design policies in the 2022 official plan. You're going to be principles-based, and to provide high-level guidance for urban design in the public and private realms. Next slide, please. So the frame of reference and starting point for this project is the Provincial Planning Act and the provincial policy statement 2020. And really, the province, through its enabling legislation and supporting policies, decides what you can do and can't do. That's the planning regime that municipalities, as well as residents, as well as developers and stakeholders all operate within. So the 2022 Central Elgin official plan was updated to align with the provincial policy statement, as well as the Elgin County Plan. And as was previously indicated in your session ahead of this one, the county OP, or the county approved the Central Elgin OP in early 2023. The OP, Central Elgin's plan sets the direction for growth in the municipality to the year 2046. Now, the new zoning bylaw will be the key planning tool for implementing the planning policies and land use designations in your official plan. Next slide, please. So the 2013 official plan was the first official plan, the first generation plan for the newly-created municipality of Central Elgin. That official plan was implemented by three predecessor, or three old bylaws from the predecessor municipalities, the Yarmouth Township, and the villages of Port Stanley and Belmont. So Central Elgin is creating a new comprehensive zoning bylaw to implement your second generation official plan. And at the same time, Central Elgin is taking the opportunity to prepare companion urban design guidelines for its public spaces and certain land uses to ensure consistency with your new official plan and new zoning bylaw. Next slide, please. Okay, next slide. So the zoning bylaw and urban design work plan is divided into four stages. The project was kicked off in March of this year, and the scheduled completion is in March of 2024, so a one-year duration. Next slide, please. Stage one, let's project start up, and it was in March and April. The key tasks included execution of the contract, so as finalizing the work plan and engagement plan, and collection of information, background information, data, maps. And there was a wealth of data. So the final task in stage one is tonight's presentation of the work plan and engagement plan to council. The next slide, please. So we are in stage two, review and analysis. It runs from April to the end of June. And there are a number of activities that are underway. We're analyzing data as well as existing zoning bylaws. We're carrying out a best practices review of zoning bylaws and urban design guidelines that in consultation with the project team are considered to be representative examples of municipality like Central Elgin from a size and scale and utility perspective. We're also working on the zoning bylaw and urban design issues approaches and options discussion paper. What that is, is to identify what our findings are, what kind of directions, or an optional directions are, are being put forward, a bit of a review of them. And that would provide a basis for some decisions in terms of the ultimate moving forward for the new zoning bylaw and urban design guidelines. As well, we are starting to prepare public engagement materials, as well as preparing the project launch, and preparing for the hybrid in-person and virtual public engagement session number one. And Nicole will be talking about that further in her presentation. Next slide, please, Nicole. Now, stage three, it's the preparation of the draft zoning bylaw and urban design guidelines. It runs from June to January 2024. Key tasks, preparing the draft zoning bylaw document, preparing the urban design guideline document, as well as preparing a summary report outlining key recommendations in regards to the zoning bylaw and urban design guidelines. There'll be preparation of public engagement materials, and there'll be a public open house for the draft zoning bylaw and urban design guidelines, and that'd be called session number two. Next slide, Nicole. And stage four, the last stage, is the refinement and finalization of the bylaw and urban design guidelines. It would run from January to March 2024. And key tasks are refine, prepare, preparation of the refined zoning bylaw and guideline document, a presentation to council and the public at a statutory public meeting, some final adjustments and edits to the bylaw and the guideline documents, and then submission to Central Elgin for final approval and council adoption. Next slide, please. And I'll pass it to Nicole to present the engagement plan.
Thank you, Ron. So to develop the engagement plan, we use the International Association for Public Participation framework to establish the engagement goals that will meet throughout the project. So the goals you can see on the screen here are what we will achieve through the engagement process. So this project aims to meet the inform, consult, and involve goals. And what this means is our commitment to the public to provide objective and balanced information to assist them in understanding the issues and solutions, obtain feedback from the public on the decisions that are being made, and work with the public to ensure that concerns and aspirations are reflected in the plan. We will meet these engagement goals through the tasks outlined on this slide. So as Ron mentioned, we are presenting our engagement plan tonight, which really sets the tone, overview, plan, and commitment to community engagement throughout the project. And from here, we'll create the Central Elgin Engagement Page on Let's Talk, which will be updated throughout the project, and include project information and opportunities for engagement. And we aim to launch that in early June. And then later in June, on the 28th, we'll host our first public engagement event. And the purpose of this event is to understand the issues, concerns, and opportunities for changes to the way that the municipality is regulating land use and urban design guidelines. And then further down the line, early next year, we'll host our second public engagement event, where we'll consult with the public on the key, or we'll consult with the public and key users on the document, on the draft zoning bylaw and urban design guidelines in order to obtain feedback on those. So as Ron mentioned, we take a really collaborative approach to engagement, and we'll work closely with the Central Elgin team throughout the process. So this really comes through in our shared responsibilities to manage communications with the public. And at Dillon, our role is to develop the draft notices and website material, develop engagement events and methods for feedback collection, and to summarize feedback to make sure what we're hearing is reflected in the plan. The Central Elgin team will be responsible for outreach and distribution of event notices and coordinating event logistics. So we've developed a project contact list, which we'll use throughout the project to distribute invitations and notices throughout the project. This list has been updated from some of our previous outreach efforts through the official plan engagement that we completed. And this list includes council, municipal staff, the conservation authorities, agricultural groups, environmental groups, developers and home builders, residence associations, and BIAs, the St. Thomas Housing Service Provider, First Nations stakeholders, organizations, and METI, and the general public. And this list will continue to be updated as the project progresses. So I'll pass it back to Ron to talk about the next step.
Thanks, Nicole. So where are we currently with our work? Next slide, please. So with this council presentation, stage one is now completed. For stage two, review and analysis, we're in the middle of our best practice review of the bylaw and the guidelines, the issues and options review for the zoning bylaw. We're working on the background discussion paper. We're preparing public engagement materials for session number one. So we're, we're moving along and again targeted for completion of this stage by the end of June. Next slide, please. So that concludes the presentation, and I'm going to pass the mic back to Mayor Sloan and council for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council? Seeing none, I want to thank you for the report and appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to correspondence. A requiring action, Port Stanley BIA Board of Management. Any questions or comments from council about this particular issue? Counselor Graham, and then Counselor Bachman, please.
It's mostly through you, Mr. Mayor. It's mostly self-explanatory. The BIA would like to put some picnic tables on the berm and on, at Hoff House Park to have a little more use and places for people to sit throughout the summer so that it's more utilized.
Thank you. Counselor Bachman, please.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a great idea. I'm just wondering, the picnic tables, are they being supplied by the BIA? And are they wood or metal?
They would be wood.
Okay.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Oh, Mr. Brooks, please.
I get the staff would have a couple of questions in regards to the placement of the picnic tables. Would the BIA be proposing to install those at their cost, or would they be asking the municipality to install those?
Counselor Graham, please. Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
I'm not sure. To be honest with you, I'm not sure if, if the BIA wants to place them, or if they want to ask municipal staff to do that. So I think that we would just get in touch with Mr. Brooks and work that out.
Mr. Brooks, please.
So with the placement of the picnic tables, there would be a cost to do that. Anything that you put out in the beach area in the summertime tends to go missing or get vandalized. So typically in the past, with picnic tables, staff would pour a concrete pad so that it could bolt the tables to a concrete pad so they, they don't end up in the lake. So as well as that, we would mulch the area around the picnic table to reduce maintenance and meat eating, that sort of thing. So, you know, staff would suggest that to reduce that cost, that the tables be, you know, grouped in sets of three or four to reduce the installation cost.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Counselor Graham?
Yeah, we weren't looking at putting a cement pad. We're just looking at placing them there. So they were looking at just the cost of, the BIA is going to cover all the costs for the picnic tables. But again, we could talk about that, but definitely not the, there was no consideration for the, for a cement pad on it.
And we'll take that through the chair to Mr. Brooks.
Sure. So, you know, with council direction, staff would be happy to install those. That would be an unbudgeted item that we currently aren't carrying. So depending on the configuration of the tables, you know, there would be a cost involved there that is not budgeted for.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Follow up, Counselor Graham? Thank you. Counselor Bachman, please.
Just, I guess, another consideration with, with the picnic tables, obviously, you're going to have garbage. So we're going to need garbage collection, and just some cans distributed around for, for the collection. So that's just another consideration, and just like added in.
Thanks, Counselor Bachman. Comment, Mr. Brooks? Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If I get a mover in a second or please. Counselor Connors, Counselor Graham?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Connors, seconded by Counselor Graham, that the letter from the Port Stanley BIA Board of Management regarding the installation of picnic tables be received for information.
All those in favor? Closed, carried. Mr. Graves, sorry.
Sorry, can I just, can we imply that the council is okay providing direction to help with the installation? And if there's any significant cost, I guess we'll come back and let. And if there's any significant cost, I guess we'll come back and let let you know about that, so.
Is that fair, Mr. Brooks? Counselor Graham? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Graves. Received for information, two items from Elgin County. Any questions or comments? If I could get a mover in a second or Counselor Connors, Deputy Mayor Noble.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Connors, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble. The correspondence items number one and two be received for information and filed.
Question, Counselor Halpin.
And thank you, uh, through Mayor Sloan. Uh, I did try to watch the Elgin County meeting that day, and I'm not sure if there's been changes since, but I don't think everything was recorded. Um, uh, how did the discussion about Bill Five go? What was the sort of take on that?
It was discussed. Um, it went forward. There was a vote on it and they wrote a letter. Any other questions or comments?
Sure, I was curious about it specifically because when we had discussed it, um, there was a general feeling that there hadn't been enough information and enough time to consider it. And so I wondered, um, with more time and consideration, what the general conversation was in the room. And since it wasn't, since there was some sort of technical error, I thought maybe you could share that with us.
I could defer to the Deputy Mayor. He was there as well. Do you have anything further to add?
I I don't have any for anything further to add to it. It uh like uh Mayor said, it was discussed and voted on and the letter was sent.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I have a mover and a seconder. I just need uh all those in favor of accepting this for information, please. Opposed, carried? Reports, Central Elgin Planning Office, CEP two eight two three. Any questions or comments on this application, council? Staff? If I could get a mover in a second or please. Counselor Watson? Deputy Mayor Noble?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Watson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that report CEP twenty eight twenty three be received and that direction be given by council to prepare a site-specific draft amendment to the township of Yarmouth zoning by law to satisfy conditions of a resident surplus to a farming operation severance on lands located at four two four three one Ron McNeil line, which may be legally described as range two North Edgeware Road, part of lot three, municipality of Central Elgin, and further that a date for a public meeting be established in accordance with Ontario Regulation five forty five oh six as amended.
All those in favor? Opposed, carried? CEP two nine two three, an application to amend township of Yarmouth by law nineteen ninety eight, four three three one seven Truman Line. Any questions or comments from council? Mr. Bach or Counselor Bachman, please.
Um, actually, this is for, uh, I guess Lloyd or Jeff who can help me clarify this. When reading, going through this, I couldn't find an answer to what actually qualified as uh discrepancies, hydraulic discrepancies between reports, and it it referred to it, but I just didn't know what the discrepancies were.
Thank you, Counselor Bachman. Will I, Mr. McClure, or Mr. 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 McClure, please?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Sloan, uh, through to uh Counselor Bachman. Uh, I'm just trying to figure what which which discrepancies are you referring to specifically? I know there's a, there's uh, I guess in one of the, I know in one of the applications, and this is where it's a bit uh confusing in the sense of how the application was advanced and some of the discussions that we had with the applicant during the the consultation process, uh, given the historic nature of the aggregate license that was applied for. This is probably going back to like the sixties or the seventies when it was initially um uh applied for in 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 the the lot fabric. Um, I guess on the uh application or at least the report for visual reference uh for this item, uh, the location plan shows a a sliver of yellow along the side of the property on Truman Line. Uh, the environmental impact uh study that was submitted in support of the aggregate operation didn't include those lands in the in the the supporting materials. So that itself, while um, you know, staff in its review uh found that it may or may not have had much of an impact, it still was left unaddressed. But ultimately as well, uh, they are through this application process, looking to utilize the existing entrance for the uh aggregate operation that's on a Truman Line as well, but those lands were not uh studied either. So notwithstanding that there is an existing aggregate operation in place, the previous um uh studies and and the aggregate license that was uh a- applied for and approved by the province uh was under a different planning regime that didn't take into account uh the provincially significant wetland that's immediately adjacent to it, the natural heritage features and hazards and the environmentally sensitive area that's been identified in in the official plan. So from a policy perspective, that's where uh we have, we've noted to the applicant, that's that's something that should be addressed because through the approvals, that's what the province is going to be looking at as well uh as as municipal staff when we're looking at uh potentially supporting this application and move move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McClure. Counselor Bachman, does that answer your question? Very well. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, if I could get a mover in a second or please. Counselor Bachman? Counselor Watson?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Bachman, seconded by Counselor Watson, that report CEP twenty nine twenty three be received and that direction be given by council to prepare a site-specific draft amendment to the township of Yarmouth zoning by law for a proposed sand and gravel pit operation on lands located at four three three one seven Truman Line, which may be legally described as concession twelve, part lot six, registered plan eleven R five zero seven nine, part one, municipality of Central Elgin, and further that a date for a public meeting be established in accordance with Ontario Regulation five forty five oh six as amended.
All those in favor? Opposed and carried? CEP three zero two three, application to amend township of Yarmouth by law, four three three seven one Truman Line. This is what a second reading? I need a second mover in a second for this. It's on the second here, three zero two three. Questions or comments? Mover in a second or please? Deputy Mayor Noble, Counselor Connors.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Connors, that report CEP thirty twenty three be received and that direction be given by council to prepare a site-specific draft amendment to the township of Yarmouth zoning by law for a proposed sand and gravel pit operations on lands located at four three three one seven Truman Line, which may legally be described as concession twelve, north part lot six, registered plan eleven R five six four five, parts three and four, municipality of Central Elgin, and further that a date for a public meeting be established in accordance with Ontario Regulation five forty five oh six as amended.
Uh, thank you. First of all, let the record show it's four three three one seven followed by four three three seven one. Is that a typo? So two different properties? It is, Mr. McClure? Thank you very much. All those in favor? Opposed, carried. Thank you. Our next report is from the Chief Administrative Officer, CO one three two three, Municipal Property Assessment Corporation. Mr. Graves?
Thank you. You worship as the report outlines every municipality in the province, most, I should say, it, I'm sure everyone has uh has a relationship with the Municipal Property Assessment Corporation. Uh, they provide all of our uh assessment information to us, keep track of that information. Then one of the things that they do as well is when it's an election year, they provide the preliminary voters list to municipalities. Uh, as you can read by the report, they they're consolidating their operations and and come bringing everything together under one uh data sharing agreement, and and they have asked us as well as all the municipalities in the province who entered into that. There's no cost to us to enter into the agreement, and that's why it's before you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if I could get a mover in a second or please, Counselor Halpin and Deputy Mayor Noble.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that report CAO thirteen twenty three regarding Municipal Property Assessment Corporation data sharing agreement be received for information and that council direct that a bylaw be authori- be prepared to authorize the mayor and clerk to enter into the data sharing agreement.
All those in favor? Opposed and carried? Report CAO one three two three, oops, sorry, CAO one five two three, Workplace Psychological Health and Wellness Policy, Mr. Graves?
Thank you, Worship. During uh during your term of council, I'm sure there'll be several times when uh when you're receiving reports like this that are updates or additions to your existing policies and your HR policies. And that's what you have in front of you here. This one really is aimed at the escalating risk of mental health-related injuries in the workplace um and its steps that would be uh included in the uh in your existing uh HR policies that staff would be able to look to. Uh, should they uh have an acute awareness or concerns around the mental health issues in the workplace? I think this is deemed to be a positive. Um, it's just a resource for them. Uh, should uh any occurrence occurs that it's laid out fairly simply for them in terms of how to address those issues.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Questions from council? Counselor Graham?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I have some concerns about this document. I, when I went through it, um, I mean, I only had a couple of days to go through it since it didn't come to me until Friday, but in going through it, there's parts uh that there's no inclusion of council members um stated under psychological support, organizational culture. The language doesn't include council. Um, at some points, uh, there's no mention of council in in supporting role. There's, there's some definite concerns that I have with this that I feel like we need to have someone who has a Ministry of Labor background, um, a psychological health background and training certification as well as a CHIRP to a CHIRP uh certification to take a look at this document before we can move forward with it.
Thank you, Counselor Graham. Counselor Halpin?
Thank you, through you, Mayor Sloan. Uh, what work was done in preparing this and what was it modeled after?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Graves, please.
So one of the backbones for the document was a very extensive work that was done by the um the Ontario Public Service Health and Safety Association. They have a very comprehensive uh document that was used as a guidance, actually a guideline uh um report that was published last year for municipalities and other public sector entities to uh to take a look at when developing a project uh uh policy like this. And that was really the the basis for where this came from.
Thank you. I had a comment in my reading of twenty three point six responsibilities of employees. Maybe this is parroting what Counselor Graham said. Engaging in behaviors that would constitute psychological harm and or threat of harm to the mental well-being of employees, clients, or members of the public, but it doesn't include council. Um, so that was a question that I had. Um, Captain Deputy Mayor Noble, please. Did you have a question? Just a comment for me. Thank you.
Hey, I find it concerning that it doesn't include council in this, especially after um I emotionally admitted that I didn't feel comfortable in the Central Elgin office. Um, I I I find it curious that this comes out the next meeting af- after I admitted that and um I typically don't believe in coincidences, so um I uh I I struggle with the fact that it doesn't include council.
Thank you, Counselor Bachman, please.
Um, yeah, as far as um acceptance and all that, um, we all have our own experiences coming in and out of the building. Um, I've one have never felt that way. Um, I've always felt accepted and given the tours and and had pleasant conversations with staff and and admin. Um, I'm looking at the document and under twenty three point four, it says this policy applies to members of council, members of committees of council, employees, firefighters, volunteers, customers. I don't know how that part avoids any of the other, because it's part of the application, twenty three point four.
Thank you, Counselor Bachman. Counselor Grant or Counselor Halpin, please.
Thank you through you, Mayor Sloan. Uh, I could read it similarly. I um, I I know that in our procedural by law for members of council, uh, there's an entire definition of staff which includes more than just the people that you would consider to be, you know, on payroll in a regular, long-term way. And I sort of, from my reading of it, also assumed that this was a broader application and that it's from HR but applied to us as well, um, even if it didn't name us every single line. Uh, but I'd like to add as well that I've also never felt unwelcome in the building. I've typically felt encouraged to be here and that the staff really actively wanted to work with me.
Thank you, Mr. Graves, please.
Thank you. I just want to raise a couple of things. First of all, um, I I want to make sure that we're separating this employee policy from uh the broader policy that applies to council in terms of your code and conduct and your, the avenues through the integrity commissioner. And that's not what this is intended to be.
No.
This is a, this is a staff tool. And I think uh Deputy Mayor Noble, to your uh, your query about timing, I think I've over the last number of weeks, and I I'd have to go back and look at dates, suggested I would, in the process of drafting this solution, I'm not the to, I just don't want to diffuse your thing about coincidence, because I think over a number of weeks I've in my Friday updates have suggested I've been working on this, thinking this would be useful tool for staff.
Thank you, Mr. Grace. Deputy Mayor Noble, please.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. I'd feel more comfortable if if we had maybe somebody else look at this like Counselor Graham had suggested.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Noble. Any more questions or comments? Counselor Halpin, please.
Sure, thank you through you, Mayor Sloan. Um, I'm not wholly averse to having it reexamined, but I would have to consider that that always comes at a cost when you're adding professionals to it. And there was nothing stated in here that struck me as a thing you wouldn't want in your workplace. So is there, is there a specific thing in here that is causing red flags that we feel like is worth spending money to get in consultants to potentially take out of this?
Thank you, Counselor Halpin. Questions or comments? Counselor Graham?
Uh, back to my first comment through you, Mr. Mayor, that there, it needs to be a integral reciprocal relationship between council employees and throughout this document, council has been left out of it on some occasions, but then included in other occasions. So just to maintain or to build the integrity of this document, I definitely feel like we need a um um third-party consultant to take a look at it. And again, someone that has a mental health background, someone that has certification in that, someone that has a certification as a CHIRP uh designation and someone who has health and safety as well as a a labor law background.
Thank you, Counselor Graham. Counselor Watson?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the uh, is this psychological health and safety? Is it going to be an addendum to the workplace mental health? Because they almost sound like the same thing. Or are we going to have two handbooks now that everybody has to read and understand? It just seems to get pretty weighted heavy here. Another comment, I would support uh Counselor Noble in the sense it's got to be good for everybody. So for staff and counselors, because we're all getting hit hard by uh mentally sometimes, so let's make it good for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Watson. And Mr. Graves, did you want to comment, please?
Uh, just about, uh, this would be inserted in in the existing manual. This wouldn't be a standalone. It would be part of the policies within the, you know, organizations existing uh uh policy manual.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Graham, please.
Um, I would like to make the motion that we we do uh look at a consultant to have them come in and and take a look at this document.
Questions or comments? Are you, are you making a motion? Okay, I'm sorry. All right, apologies. Um, do we have a second or for the motion? Deputy Mayor Noble? Sir?
Um, through you, Mr. Mayor. What transpired to make this come to be needed?
Mr. Graves, please. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Noble.
I think uh part of the onboarding, uh, when I came into the organization, there was a a fair bit of uh strife with council staff relationships. And so over the number of weeks that I've been here, I've taken a look at uh that. I I would like to think it's improving. Uh, through my lens, it it seems to be, uh, you know, but there's still a ways to go. And um, and so I I thought, okay, what what kind of tools can we put in place? It helps not only it's council staff relationships, but as it says in the first paragraph of the report that ever more than ever, mental health issues are rising to the surface in 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 all workplaces, not just in this one. And so this is just a bit of a safeguard to help in that whole area um for the organization.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Deputy Mayor Noble and then Counselor Bachman, please.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the mental health of council is less important.
Mr. Graves, I apologize.
That is certainly not the, that is not the intent of this policy whatsoever.
Thank you, sir, Counselor Bachman.
Uh, once again, I just want to reiterate that in the application, twenty three point four and under twenty Once again, I just want to reiterate that in the application twenty-three point four and under twenty-three point five responsibilities, it's all, it outlines there that council is protected. Employees, firefighters, it's, it, I don't know why, what what are we afraid of? Because I'm looking at this going, it encompasses everything. So I don't know who we're trying to protect if it literally encompasses all the employees of Central Algon.
Thank you, Counselor Bachman. My comment was to twenty-three point six specifically about the responsibility of employees. But Counselor, did you have a Counselor Halpin? Did you have a question?
Thank you. I would like to declare by point of privilege that no member of council has the right to deliberately assume ill intentions of the staff. And I think that Deputy Mayor Noble may need to be reminded that he's not allowed to assume that any staff person would do this in a malicious way.
Okay, so you've made your point of privilege. Thank you, Counselor Halpin. Counselor Graham, please.
Just to speak briefly to that and then move forward with the motion, I don't believe that that was the intention of the deputy mayor. But because council is left out, it is there, it can be assumed because their council is left out on multiple areas of this document. Psychological competencies, growth and development, sorry, growth and development, clear leadership expectations when it goes through psychological support organizational cul- culture. So I believe that that was what the deputy mayor may have been referring to. But I would like to have a vote on the motion on the floor, please.
Thank you, Counselor Graham. Ms. Leach, please.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Graham, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that a consultant be engaged to review the draft psychological health and safety policy.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Director of Infrastructure and Community Services, being nun director of financial services and treasurer, we have our first quarter variance report. Any questions or comments? Counselor Graham.
I was just wondering if we have final numbers before we.
Ms. Gupta, Harid, are you available?
Yes, I am here. Good morning and good evening, everyone. Yes, we do. And then June the twelfth, the financial statements are being presented and also the annual highlights of the financial reporting will be presented to the council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Arshana.
Any other questions or comments from council? Seeing none, if I could get a mover in a second or please. Counselor Connors. Counselor Halpin.
And if I may, Mayor Sloan.
Yes, please.
This quarterly report is always presented like second of the meetings after the quarter end. I just want to make sure that everybody is aware that we'll be presenting it on quarterly basis.
Very good. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
If I could have all those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Item number two, D F S one, four, two, three, request for tenders annual surface treatment. Any discussion on this from counselor staff? Mr. Brooks, please.
I I would just add that this is for the supply and placement of surface treatment or tar and chip. Over the past ten years, the municipality has joined in with the County of Elgin in the tender for this service, as well as many other lower tier municipalities in the county. So we have a summary showing how that price has increased over the past ten years and you know, to the point where it's almost doubled. So.
Mr. Brooks, I noticed that it's quite substantial. Is that materials mostly?
It's mainly materials. The emulsion that's supplied is tied to the petroleum prices and as well as the emulsion, it supplies aggregate to mix in with the emulsion. And we're seeing aggregate prices almost double over the past few years as well.
Thank you. As for the tar and chip, we, the Deputy Mayor Noble and I were were asked today if South Edge, where east of Gowdy was on the list, but I leave that to the, to the general. Counselor Graham, please.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Brooks. So the twenty twenty-three budget's one point five for this and and this current amount is right around the the point five amount. Is that the entirety of the twenty, the roads will be done in twenty twenty-three? Or is there more to come?
Mr. Brooks, please.
That will be the entirety of what's done through the surface treatment program. Included in the resurfacing program, we have the surface treatment, we have gravel resurfacing as well as hot mix paving, which is asphalt paving. We anticipate about four hundred thousand dollars in gravel resurfacing. And we have reviewed the hot mix program for this year. And staff would be deferring that program or reserving those funds that have been set aside in twenty twenty-three for a more wholesome program in twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Follow up, Counselor Graham.
And through you, Mr. Mayor, just to Mr. Brooks. The entire town of Port Stanley wants to thank you for paving that piece coming in before the May two, four weekend.
Thank you, Counselor Graham. Can I get a mover in a second or please? Deputy Mayor Noble. Counselor Watson.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Watson, that report D F S fourteen, twenty-three regarding requests for tenders twenty twenty-three to thirty-two annual surface treatment be received for information and that the council of the corporation of the municipality of Central Algon accept the tender from Dunn Court Enterprises Incorporated for twenty twenty-three to thirty-two annual surface treatment in the amount of five hundred fourteen thousand, two hundred sixty-six dollars and eighty cents plus all applicable taxes.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Director Fire Services, just one comment, chief to you as Counselor Graham said, and thanking Mr. Brooks. Thank you. You had a a busy and successful weekend, it looked like on the long weekend. And as always, we appreciate the work that you and your team do. Moving on to Director of Asset Management and Development Services. We have two bylaws. Bylaw number one, two, seven, nine, one, execute agreement, Curry Boulevard, active transportation fund. Comments from staff? Council? Counselor Graham, please.
I have a concern with this again. When we're looking at the Edward Street stairs and Curry Boulevard at the same time, to me, for accessibility, it seems like it's two solutions for one problem. I know it's always a concern from Belmont Lynn Hurson, Yarmouth about spending money in Port Stanley. So I don't think that we need to have two solutions for the same problem. I would support that we don't support the Curry Boulevard situation right now and that we wait until we have the final report from Mr. Brooks about the Edward Street stairs before we move forward with anything else.
Thank you, Counselor Graham. Counselor Halpin, please.
Thank you through you, Mayor Sloan. What is our deadline for responding to the Curry Boulevard grant offer?
Thank you for your question, Mr. Graves, please.
I don't know if there's a hard deadline. Jeff, are you familiar with that?
Mr. Brooks, please.
There isn't necessarily a hard deadline on it. You know, the sooner the better for the federal government on this one so that they can you know, set aside the funds for this project and allocate them for the specific years that, you know, this funding would be proposed for. So, you know, it, you know, sooner rather than later, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Counselor Bachman, then Counselor Halpin, please.
As to the Curry Street suggestion or proposal, I'm looking at that as to me, a meets all requirements proposal. We're, we're getting money given to us. I believe somewhere in the neighborhood of two thirds funding. And it meets the needs of seniors disability. It meets the needs of young families, whereas the stairs meets the needs of those that can handle the stairs. Whereas this is an active passive way to get from one side of Port Stanley down to the, down to the area. I've visited the area today. I took the tour. I've seen all the suggestions. To me, this makes perfect sense and solves everyone's concerns about active, safe transportation. The stairs only meet the the needs of those that can handle the stairs. And our aging population. And I see that as only being accessible to those people that live in that immediate area as opposed to this passive pathway that meets the needs of everybody that lives in that area, not just those that live in that one section. It's also, as I understand it, part of a master plan trail system that if we defer or you know, not go ahead with this. This is part of an overall master trail plan that if we decline this, it affects future funding for our master trail plan. Because if the, is it federal story? If the federal government says, look, we have money for you to develop your master trails, your trail plans. And we decline? What's the chance we're going to get the money in the future to develop more trails when they just said, why would we give you money when you already turned down some to develop a trail system that was already approved? And as I understand it, this is part of a master trail plan.
Just to clarify, I think it's six hundred thousand of a million dollars, not, so it's not, it's not being totally funded. Deputy Mayor Noble, did you have a question? Oh, we were. I apologize. Counselor Halpin, then Deputy Mayor Noble.
Thank you through you, Mayor Sloan. I I would like to add to that, that we don't have to necessarily do both. We can reasonably look at this and say, well, if it's within a certain number of dollars, the one project as the other to us. And with sixty percent covered, that is a possibility. If this is not significantly more and it allows those accessibility needs and could even help to decongest parking because suddenly people can cycle into town and things. We may be really addressing a lot of concerns here at the same time. So I guess if there's not a hard deadline on this, what I'd like to know is how soon can we hope to have enough answers about the stairs that we can make this decision sooner rather than later? Because I wouldn't want to hold off on an opportunity like this forever.
Question for staff, they sort of, I think Mr. Brooks said you weren't, it was, we didn't have a hard and fast date, but please on either. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We would expect to have the consultant that is designing the staircase in for the June twelfth meeting to do a brief presentation on the design of the stairs as well as a cost estimate.
Great. Thanks, Mr. Brooks. I have the deputy mayor, and then I have you, Counselor Bachman. Thank you.
Just my thought, if you're at the top of the hill and we have curry and then you scoot down prospect and there's a set of stairs there, it, you're already there, like to, to go down courier, to shoot down prospect and and shoot a set of stairs. You're already there and it comes down to how much, how much money do we have to spend for, for this? And and how much do the public actually want one versus the other or just a safe solution? And and save some money.
Thank you, Counselor Bachman, please.
I believe this is more than just saving money. I believe it is a safety factor. We're dealing with young families that can't handle the stairs, the seniors can't handle the stairs. But can actively bike or take their scooter or whatever mode of transportation they have. And we're widening curry. That's the, that's the plan. We're widening curry and giving it that, that safe buffer zone to get from one side to the other. And also I see once again, respectfully, in my opinion, I see those stairs as more of a want, where I see curry as more of a need. And in in my opinion, it comes down to a want versus needs.
Thank you, Counselor Bachman. Counselor Halpin, please.
Thank you through you, Mayor Sloan. I do agree that if it came to having the opportunity to do either one or the other, I'd be more inclined toward curry and I would think it addressed the needs of more people. But if we're looking at only really less than a month until we can hope to have a price on the stairs, then I would be willing to second Counselor Graham's suggestion that we wait that one month and see what the price comparison is.
Thank you.
So I'd like to put that motion on the floor that we do wait until we have information on the stairs.
Question from the deputy mayor.
You, Mr. Eric, to to staff. The the grade on Curry Boulevard, how safe is that for folks that are struggling to walk or like you wouldn't do that with a, with a walker or a wheelchair? Like a wagon or a buggy might be okay, but it, you still have a significant slope on that. Am I correct in saying that?
Mr. Brooks, please.
So the the grade of the pathway would generally follow the same grade as Curry Boulevard exists right now.
Thank you. Ms. Leach, please.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Graham, seconded by Counselor Halpin, that bylaw two, seven, nine, one be deferred until council has received additional information regarding the proposed Edward Street Stairs project.
All those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried by law two, seven, nine, three interim temporary C O clerk appointment. Relatively straightforward. Mr. Perrin will be assuming the duties of the C O during the absence of Mr. Graves. Can I get a mover in a second or please? Deputy Mayor Noble, Counselor Bachman.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Bachman, that bylaw two, seven, nine, three be read a first and second time.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Now I need a mover and another mover in a second or please. Counselor Connors, Counselor Watson.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Connors, seconded by Counselor Watson, that bylaw two, seven, nine, three be read a third time and finally passed.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Sorry, Mr. Graves, apologies.
Sorry, your worship. There's a couple of other items that we just need to mention this evening. First of all, the I believe it's the annual meeting of earth is this week on the twenty-fifth and you're not able to attend. So we should have a motion, I believe. Deputy Mayor is going to represent you as the voting delegate for that meeting.
Thank you. So if I could get a mover in a second or for that motion? Counselor Bachman, Counselor Connors, please. Thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Bachman, seconded by Counselor Connors, that Deputy Mayor Noble be designated as the voting delegate on behalf of the municipality of Central Algon for the earth annual general meeting dated May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three.
Favor opposed? Carried. Mr. Graves.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The second item was that I believe at the fun end of the year, your regular June the twelfth meeting was bumped to June the fifth because I think there's an administrative conference or something is going on, but that won't impact our regular meeting on the twelfth. So I'm wondering if council would concur that it holds a council meeting in June for the, on the twelfth, as was originally planned versus the fifth.
Okay. We need a motion?
Was it done by motion? I guess we should maybe that the, the first meeting in June be held on June the twelfth.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. If I could get a mover. Counselor Connors and a second or Counselor Watson.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Connors, seconded by Counselor Watson, that the first meeting in June be held on June twelfth, twenty twenty-three at seven P M.
All those in favor? Opposed and carried. Was there anything else, Mr. Graves? Very good. So we are good to go into closed session. If I could get a mover in a second or for that, Counselor Graham and Deputy Mayor Noble. Thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads. Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Counselor Graham, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, the council proceed into closed session at eight twenty-eight PM in order to address a matter pertaining to advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose and a position plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. So could we? Return? Uh, if I could get a mover in a second or to adjourn from closed session, uh, Counselor Connors, Counselor Watson?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Counselor Connors, seconded by Counselor Watson, that council adjourn from closed session and return to open session at nine fifty-seven PM.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Mover in a second or for CS two? Deputy Mayor Noble? Counselor Connors?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Connors, that closed session item CS two regarding Port Stanley be received for information and that staff proceed as directed by council.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. CS three? Can I get a mover in a second or please? Counselor Watson, Deputy Mayor Noble?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Counselor Watson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that closed session item CS three regarding Sunset Drive be received for information and that staff proceed as directed by council.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? CS four? Mover in a second or please? Deputy Mayor Noble, Counselor Watson?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Watson, that closed session item CS four regarding economic development be received for information and that staff proceed as directed by council.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Bylaws. Can I get a mover in a second or for bylaw two, seven, nine, five, please? Counselor Hoppin? Counsel, Deputy Mayor Noble?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Counselor Hoppin, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that bylaw two, seven, nine, five be read a first and second time.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Two, seven, nine, five, a second or for first, uh, deputy, sorry, Deputy Mayor Noble? Counselor Connors?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Connors, that bylaw two, seven, nine, five be read a third time and finally passed.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. If I could get a mover in a second or for adjournment, please. Counselor Bachman, Counselor Hoppin? Yep, we're good. I just checked. Thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Counselor Bachman, seconded by Counselor Hoppin, that the regular meeting of council dated Tuesday, May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three be adjourned at nine fifty-nine PM, that the next regular meeting of council be scheduled for Monday, June twelfth, twenty twenty-three at seven o'clock PM.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, staff. Thanks for those joining us at home.
Good night, everyone.
So, uh, if you worship, so we're going to stay here and we remember we recessed from a former meeting for a few minutes and then we'll, we, we need to go back into close and resume, but we'll have staff leave and then you can continue your discussion.